That you be with us as we ponder these decisions that need to be made. We ask all things in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Karen, may I have the roll call please?
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Finley. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Vaughn is out of town and unable to attend the meeting. Therefore, do you respectfully request an excuse or stay?
So.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Page.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Several. Seven.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Finley.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes. Are there any, um, no clear, clear, you're trying to get, it's okay.
You have several public comments?
No problem. So that was gonna be my next question is to ask you if there are any public comments.
Madam Mayor, we have Uriah Langmeyer here to speak from the American Red Cross.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Uriah Langmeyer, and I am a member of the Outreach Committee for the Board of Directors for the local Miami Valley Red Cross chapter of the American Red Cross. I am coming to you today wanting to talk about the Sound the Alarm event that we have going on on the 20th in the John Wolf Park neighborhood where we're hoping to be able to install upwards of 300 alarms in the homes of people in that park. What we do is we come in, we have, the event runs from nine to one, and we have our trained volunteers that come together with getting, we're hoping to get about 20 community members that will be able to come and participate with us. And we get everybody set up with all the tools, and we go home to home, making sure that everybody in that area has all the working smoke alarms and stuff that they need to be safe in their homes. The other reason why I'm coming here is as a member of the Outreach Committee, I want to be able to introduce myself to be a contact for everyone throughout the year to make it so the Red Cross can be as big a part of this community, community as possible. I want it to be that when we address the city council, that we're addressing you with a contingency of community members that participate with the Red Cross. But across, as you know, there's so many different things throughout the community, and we want to be able to have support everywhere that we go. And so I'm gonna connect with Charles Wheeler, connect with him to start working on stuff throughout the year and know that we are here for this community and look forward to working with you guys. And as we go in tomorrow, everybody stay safe and know that we'll be there as the storm's passed to help wherever is needed.
Are there any questions?
No.
If you want.
Okay. Was there a particular neighborhood that you guys are actually targeting Monday, April the 20th, or you have an address list, or how is that working?
Um, it seems that when you sign up online, it connects you to, you build the community meeting point, and then they will have a whole map set up of the teams that will grow out, and it's basically door to door. They have some people that have gone ahead and scheduled it. When I went around and did this, it was half scheduled and then half door to door. We went and just to make sure, because a lot of the times people have them, but they don't know that they're old, or they're not in the right places, and we do this to make sure that community do what they do.
Thank you. Yes.
First of all, thank you so much. We look forward to partnering with you, and we're very, very happy that you're here in Trapwood. I would ask that you also work with our fire department because they do a similar thing with them, and I know they will be more than happy to work alongside you.
Oh, absolutely. Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Just one, I'm gonna ask you, does the city manager, uh, will you connect him with Mr. Gillis?
Uh, yes, and I.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. From his comment, it sounds like Ms. Landis has his contact information. Great. We will make those connections with Charles Wheeler and the fire department. Okay, thank you.
And just clarification, because I was, I was so happy that you were here, that I wasn't listening, and I think, I know God gave me two ears, but you're saying you're going to do more than that.
Our, our, our goal is to hit 300 homes, get throughout that, that neighborhood. And it always varies depending on what you come across and how much you install, but if we, if we make 150 homes, a lot more saves, then that's, that's a huge victory.
And the reason why I was asking you to repeat that, because we have people that are online that's looking at us virtually, and I want everybody to be aware, because one person telling another person, we may exceed 300, but I want to thank you for looking at us for coming here this evening, and we're looking forward to working, working with you for this.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
For sure. Have a good, thanks so much.
Madam Mayor, Donnie Anderson is here to speak about speeding on East Main Street between Kaufman and Broadway, and also on Sunrise.
Good evening, Councilmember Donnie Anderson, is taking 201 East Main Street. I have stayed there for 20 years. We've got a problem running our neighborhood from the block of Kaufman to Broadway. There's a lot of speeding going on there, and it's changed, I said, within the last five years. You know, we have a lot of children in it here, and I've noticed, I've witnessed since I've been there, two kids gotten hit at the corner of Sunrise and Main. The problem is coming around that curve on Main. If you're going south from Sunrise, and you're gonna make a left on the main, people are having, are not enough time to react, cause plumb speeding around that curve. I mean, I had two cars end up in my yard because of this. It's, it's really, really sad. I don't know how other to address this and say it's getting very, very dangerous now. I've been, like I said, I've been there 20 years, I've seen it change. Now we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and it used to be that. I don't know how many multiple mishaps I've seen, a lot of them. I sit on my front porch, I see it every day. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention that we're gonna have a fatality in that corner, and we'll do something about that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Kitchens is here to speak about property at 2717 North Snyder Road and exceptions to Chapter 1171.
Madam Mayor and local members of the council, my name is Bonnie Kitchens, and I own the property at 2770 North Snyder Road along with my sister. The purpose of my presentation is that I have been working with Debbie McDonald and Lou Rancio, civil engineer, in regards to dividing the property. I understand that revisions to Chapter 1171 have been postponed until the next meeting, and I wanted to present how that affects me and the property and being able to divide it the way that we have envisioned. We, I'm a former Trotwood resident of 26 years, graduated from Trotwood High School. My family, my dad bought the farm in 1969, and in 2032, it will be 200 years old and part of Trotwood history forever. I, it is my desire to see the house and some of the property passed on to a family that will cherish it and love it as much as we do. We have had a family that currently lives in Trotwood approaches, and they would like to buy the farmhouse and some land around the farmhouse for yard use. The rest of it is currently being farmed. The way it stays in Chapter 1171 with five acres for agricultural use and 20 acres for residential use doesn't make sense to me. It seems backwards, and being able to sell the farmhouse and surrounding land would also satisfy my fiduciary responsibilities as far as the trust is concerned. My dad put a trust together, put me in as trustee, and that my sister has no interest in keeping the farm with the farmhouse. She wants the trust taken care of, and that is what I am trying to accomplish. I am also requesting that Chapter 1171 be considered for revision so that we can make this happen for all parties involved. I feel like it's, it's the best option for everyone that we're considering, as well as the city of Trapwood, and to make this happen would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Victor Tanner is here to speak about traffic.
First of all, how's everyone doing?
Did you miss the council address?
Uh, my address is 4847 Free Pike. I live at the corner of Hermosa and Free Pike. I'll talk with Vice Mayor Brown. So, um, excuse me, I'm not equipped with this, but I'm just gonna try to express myself. I live in, I've lived there for over 30 years, and I've noticed that in the neighborhood it's gotten increasingly louder. And the reason I stand here in front of you is because recently my wife, maybe two weeks ago, said, "I don't feel safe anymore." And honestly, I don't either. And here's some of the reasons why. I said pictures worth a thousand words, but I can't show pictures, but maybe you can hear some things that we hear and we experience as regards to traffic. Guess what? We could have a Wi-Fi. What's been happening is they have been doing donuts in front of my street, ATVs, cars. They've done it down at Roombaugh. I think they've done it down at, where Dinler and Hermosa's at, and you can see the skid marks there doing the donuts at all times at night, and it's very, very dangerous, like the gentleman before, and somebody's gonna die. It's not a question of if, it's just when. It's very, very dangerous. It should raise our antennas, because where they're doing the donuts, there's actually three daycares that sit there. There's a daycare on Free Pike side across the street from, there's a daycare on Hermosa, and there's also where that church sits at, you know, Roombaugh, there's, that's the daycare in there, and they're doing donuts constant, sometimes every night. And we kind of know that's in the plan, but it kind of needs some help. I think, um, Ms. Brown, she gave some nice suggestions, but I would hope, I would, I would want the police, if they could, to just set up in my, you know, would be offered in other neighbors, it's not just me, but just to set up in the, in my parking lot, you know, in my driveway or something. That way, it'd kind of deter maybe some of the traffic and the noise. You know, we haven't even got to the noise part, but this is the biggest issue right now, that somebody's gonna get hurt, and that's basically all I can say.
Well, we, we, thank you for coming for us, because if we don't know what's happening, we can't, we can't help you. The direction that I'm gonna take us, I let everybody know if it's their first time coming here and you see me writing, because I'm taking notes, so I would like to get with our city manager and our deputy city manager, and with the police force. And all of this is on tape anyway, and we're gonna try to, they may come out and ask you and stuff like that. I don't know if you have the little cameras on your doors or anything like that.
Yes.
So that may be a, a way that you can, but I, I promise you that we'll get in contact with you about this. It's there. Yes.
Madam Mayor, may I offer one thing?
Absolutely.
We would like to let our citizens know that we do understand this hooning and the ATV takeovers. It's imperative that we explain to our citizens that our police department has been extremely proactive with regard to this issue. In fact, last year, we testified in the State House, trying and working with our local representatives, Phil Plummer, Mary White, et cetera, in trying to get statewide legislation passed to address these issues. We do traffic and travel 411 lane miles. Our police chief is here, he's heard those concerns, and he'll step up some of the, you know, monitoring, but I cannot promise you it would be 24/7 because so many people are asking the same questions. So what I do advise, when that's happening, call 911.
I do it all the time. I mean, I'm on speed dial, you know.
I just wanted to give you that. I didn't want to do it back and forth, but I did want our citizens to understand, we take this extremely seriously, and unfortunately, it did, did not finalize yet, but we're not finished with talking to our representatives, so we will continue those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are concerned as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, Richard Eldridge is here to speak about racing parking and noise at nearby residents.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Richard Eldridge. I reside at, reside at 4737 Pier Pond Drive in Trapwood. I'm a Newish resident. I've been here for one and a half years. This is a long time resident in the neighborhood, and so is Elois, and this is Mike. Unfortunately, I'm going to pile on what the gentleman before me said and the gentleman before him said. We're having an issue with our neighbors at 4802 Pier Pond Drive. They are, they have a motorcycle club, a car club come in, and the people that are visiting the residents at this house are racing up and down the streets, and it can be anywhere from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM Monday, Sunday through Saturday, it doesn't matter. We've tried to talk to them and ask them, you know, please don't latch in and out of the neighborhood, and as the one gentleman said, it's not if, but it's when. We have elderly folks in the neighborhood, there are animals that are in the streets. We have a daycare at the corner of Pier Pond and Weddington. You can go to, a lot of days, you can go to the, at Noel Craft and Dinglere, and you can see where the cars are peeling out, or the motorcycles are peeling out and taking off. You can hear them from my house on Pier Pond, they're on Shiloh Springs or Dinglere, and they're just revving up and down the street all the time. We're asking for any and all help that you can give us. And I did hear what you said, and we appreciate that, and we know that you're limited in what you can do. We called the police. The house is also disgusting. There are many cars parked out in front, in, in the yard. They do auto repair and light repair there, so we're asking for any and all help that you can give us. And if I could add, I have called the Regulus Fat Center several times, and you should have a record of that, and that will sort of give you an idea that we have been trying to be proactive in doing something. So anything that's in your toolbox that you can help us, is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I wanted to ask you one question. Are you aware of our GovAlert app that we have? That's, that's for, that's for all the citizens of Trapwood? If you download that GovAlert app, it, it tells you a little bit of everything what you can report, from a dead carcass in the street to trash, pants not being removed from the street, but you can also report on that, on that GovAlert. I just want to make you aware of that, too. That's another tool if you should run into anything else. May not be, especially for this topic, but the city manager kind of explains to you, and, and we have to be aware, but I thank you for coming out and letting us do that. But, but do download that GovAlert app also, that will be advantageous.
That I have, and you can probably see that there have been reports that have been submitted before you go to. Unfortunately, when you do make these reports, by the time somebody comes, it's all set up. So again, anything you can do to help us, we'd appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you so much for coming out.
Madam Mayor, Maggie Thomas is here to speak about code enforcement, electric aggregation in group homes.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Thomas, and I live 5866 West Ole Drive. I've lived there now 40 years, and I have noticed in recent years that my neighborhood has changed to the point of group homes. I have a lot of trash in my yard that I've never had in the past. The residence where the group home is located, it's not manicured. I mean, I have lived there 40 years, and I know that people come and go, but as far as keeping the neighborhood or the line streets the way that it has been before the group home arrived, it has been unsightly, as well as there are families that have items in their yards, such as a big trailer just sitting there in the front yard, and has been there for quite a few years. I have also submitted the information to law enforcement, code enforcement alone, and I've not heard anything about that. The group home has contiguous children in and out there, and because of that, the children throw trash down in, you know, in front of my yard, just right next door to me, and there are several other group homes in the area, and I've spoken to a number of the people that have lived there as long as I have, or just about as long, and they have built the same one that I, that I do. And it has been three years now that the group homes have been here, and I see that nothing has been improved as far as the trash and unsightly way the property is kept. In addition to that, I noticed on my utility bill that the aggregation program, I thought that it was implemented, and I am still getting a variable rate from a previous utility company, and I called about it, and I was told that, yes, there is an aggregation program. I thought that once the program was implemented, that if I did not say, I did not want to be a part of it, that I would be removed, but I never received anything, and I just assumed that I was part of the program, and I'm not, I'm at a variable rate. The third item.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Melanie White is here to speak about land split approval and internet connection in the rural communities.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Melanie White. I reside at 981 North Snyder Road, Dayton, Ohio, 4417. So as mentioned previously by the woman here, we're kind of in the same dilemma. I do want to pull up some information. So on February 21st, I received approval through Debbie McDonald for a lot split, and then, excuse me, on March 5th of 2024, I'm notified that it is denied. So I would like to get a little bit more clarity, because initially, we were approved based on if it was five acres or more. We made the adjustments with the lot split, submitted it again, and when it was approved. So I need to understand what happened in amongst time standing that caused it to be approved and then later denied. Second question I want to address is the internet. In 2023, I wrote a letter to address the fact that my community does not have good internet connection and hasn't had it for a while. What is puzzling to me is if you go two blocks down the road, Diamond Mill, or even two blocks going north, perfect Wi-Fi connection. So I want to understand, what are we doing to better assist the community, especially those that work from home, because I'm one of those that has that opportunity, but unfortunately, because of the Wi-Fi connection, I cannot work from a home. So to better assist my parents who are at home and are aging, and to be able to work efficiently, I would like to know, what are we doing about that? What is the goal, and what is the timeframe to address that issue? Both of them. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, these are all the registered comments I would like to add, there were several people signing up as the meeting started, so I don't know if anyone is still out there wanting to make a public comment, has a form to turn in.
So with that being said, if you were trying to sign in and didn't, and was not able to sign in, would you raise your hand and, and we'll take your name, because I don't want to leave anybody out if you want to do a, a public comment. So you want to do a public comment? Okay. So I'm not going to leave anybody else out, so if you could come up, state your name.
Please take your name and register to speak for a public hearing, not a public comment. Did you want to make a public comment as well?
Yeah, I thought I signed in.
You did for a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're, you're good.
All right.
Thank you.
I signed in for the public.
Good evening. My name's Melanie White. I know Deputy City Manager, I've been trying to stay in here about Wi-Fi at 981 North Snyder Road. Fellow government's got money, the state's got money. Now, I've been told the last time I talked to her, Hoover Harry Bar, June of this year. I wonder if that's true, and when they gonna start, because I haven't seen any movement out there. Well, I live there. Need, but my daughter can't work from home. I got a child that might be Wi-Fi in school, grandchild that is, so we need that. And also to get on the land split, when you got land and you got other people involved in as far as you gonna leave it to, and you can't, because you tell us, we're limited to who we're gonna have in there. If you got five kids or three kids, either you're the only one, or you can't divide it. That's the problem. That's the major problem. Because when I bought it, nobody told me what I could do with it, even though I didn't have a home of mine. But the thing is, you only can divide it how you want it. I understand your agriculture out there, no problem with that, but what's mine is mine. That's why I won't talk, I pay for it, and leave something behind for those coming behind me. And like I said, especially when you divide it, you get a lot of money divided their land. And like I said, especially when you divide it, you give it all, nobody divides their land. And then you try to leave somebody equal shares. Makes no sense. You gonna give it all to one? Yeah, don't give it to nobody. That don't make sense to me. That's why I work every day. Thank you for the time. You talking to me or he?
Thank you, Mr. White. After that, all lines clear. Okay, Kara. Special presentations, please.
P R thirteen dash twenty-four, Fire Chief Richard Hackney is here to present the 2023 annual report of the Fire and Rescue Department.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, Deputy City Manager, Citizens Staff. It's that time of year. We put another year behind us. Now I'm gonna recap it for you, for the Fire Department. Next slide. I'm gonna start out with our staffing. Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, Business Accreditation Manager, our Fire Safety Educator. Let's stop right there for a second. He's been in contact with the Red Cross. We are partnering with them to go out in the Northgate neighborhood to put in those CO or those smoke detectors. So yes, we've already been in contact. We are a part of that and looking forward to it. We're also partners with the Red Cross. That's where we get our smoke detectors for our citizens to install. So thank you for that. Three shift commanders, six lieutenants, thirty full-time firefighter E M T Bs or paramedics, and forty part-time firefighter E M TBs or paramedic. Next slide. Our daily staffing ranges between eight and sixteen. The reason that varies is because of time off. People on F M L A, different types of things. And that does not include any of the office staff. It's a three-year comparison of our budget. The numbers have stayed pretty much the same. The biggest difference is that usually the amount in the grants column. We've been very fortunate as a fire service to receive quite a few grants. And that's where a lot of our full-time employees come from, is through a federal payment grant right now. Next slide. Calls for service in 2023, we did seven thousand seventy-five calls. That was an increase of 1.03% over 2022. Over the past ten years, we went up nineteen point six percent. The calls for service range from anything, you know, from a structured fire to a D M S call to helping somebody out of bed. And that's what this breakdown is. A lot of people ask, what is a good intent call? That is anything where you call the Fire Department and it doesn't fall into one of the many other categories. It's not a medical call, it's not a fire call. We came to check your hot water heater because it was making a funny noise or something like that. You hear something in your attic. A lot of people call the Fire Department, but they don't know what else to do. That's why we're jacks of all trades. Hospital transfers. You can see that we take most of our patients to Miami Valley North, which is right there on Main Street by Myers. Naturally, that's the closest hospital to us, so that's the one we try to utilize. The next popular one is Miami Valley Hospital downtown. And that's because they're the trauma center. So we do take a lot of trauma there. Continuing for the calls for service, you can see that females are our most prominent patient. That's because there's more females in the city of Trumpwood than there are males. So, and then the average age of our patient. Our most popular, you know, once we get a little older, we're not there yet. But, you know, when we do, you need a little more help. Days of the week. Monday and Tuesday are our busiest days. You would think it would be the weekend, but it is not. Everybody wants to stay home with family and stuff on the weekends. They don't want to go to the hospital, so they don't call us. The next one is a very important one. This one is the reason we can get some grants and other things. If you look at it, when we respond to a fire, twenty-one million dollars worth of property was at risk. We saved nineteen point nine million of that. We only lost one point seven. So that's really good, really good. And how we get those numbers is, anything that the Fire Department, if we wouldn't have responded, what would have happened? And that's how you get that number of how much we saved. Next one's fire rates and the casualty reports. Civilian, we had five injured, we had one civilian death. We had seven firefighters injured. The firefighter injuries were anything from strain, pulled a muscle, stepped on a nail, things like that. The civilians, most of those were minor burns or smoke inhalation. Training, because we do so many different facets of our job, we have a lot of different trainings, and I just listed a few here. Anything that had one percent or more is listed out here. There are some trainings that only a few of us have to do, some of the administrative stuff that didn't make the list. But we do over four thousand eight hundred hours of training with all our personnel. Inspections. We complete inspections on multi-different things, all the way from food trucks to fire irons. And we just broke that out here for your audience, so you can see the different types from daycares, foster care, alarms, life safety, which is any business that is getting ready to open. We go into a life safety file. Fire prevention. Public events we attended in 2023. Some of those are an every-year event, and we'd love to be a part of it. Continuing with the fire prevention. We installed a hundred and one smoke detectors in citizens' homes along with forty-two CO detectors. And that's at no cost to the citizens. Please, if you're listening, watching this, if you're in the audience, if you need a smoke detector and you need a CO detector, please call the Fire Department office. We will come out, we will supply the CO detector, the fire alarm, and we will install it for you. You don't have to do anything. So it's just a matter of making a phone call. It's that simple. We're doing the rest. Twenty-twenty-three's education activities were focused on get out and stay out. Our fire prevention educator was in all the schools and met, as you can see, with over seven thousand two hundred children to get this message out, along with station walkthroughs and community outreach we do with some of our citizens through neighborhood watch meetings and other things. That's all I have, and if you have any questions on it, please.
I just want to thank you for your service.
My pleasure.
We, we need you. And I think this report was a great report. I want to thank you.
Y'all did a wonderful job. They just make me look good. And that's our job, to make me look good.
Okay, just, yes. How's that?
Yes.
We like to come out and replace them before the ten-year mark. But if you think, give us a call. We will come out, we will check it, we will make sure it's working properly. If it's not, we will remove it and put a new one in. Ten years is usually about the max, because after that, they start losing sensitivity. So please, give us a call, let us come out and take a look. We do not mind. If we come out and then you just got a bad battery, we'll replace the battery. We're here for you. And in every other instance, I just do. We will do it for anybody.
Oh, I think I can get a little too. Any other questions? I thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. Are there any more? Well, there are no more presentations. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
Councilmember Gales. Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Finley.
Same.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
May I have a motion to order the public hearings? And I'm gonna ask the clerk to really review the process for the public hearings, if you would, please.
Would you like me to do that now, Mayor? Would you like to do the question?
I'd like you to, to read them, you know, so they will understand what we can read and do.
You're here this evening to comment during a public hearing. You should have completed a speaker form and returned it to me. Shortly, you will be asked to stand and swear or affirm an oath of truth that will be administered by Mayor Page. When the mayor calls the ordinance you wish to speak on, you will be asked to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. You will have three minutes to speak, and only comments related to that specific ordinance are permissible.
So do we have, because I need to administrate the order before, so.
We do. We still want to wait to open the public hearing.
Okay, I thought I'd be it, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
One second.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Finley.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
So at this time, all those who registered or those that maybe came in late and want to speak for a public hearing, if you'll please stand and raise your right hand, Mayor Page.
I, and then state your name. Do solemnly swear. Or affirm. That I would give statements that are true and correct to the best of my knowledge and belief. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I would just, Kara, with the ordinance is now open. Will you read the ordinance as that you need to do? Okay, you're gonna ask us?
Well, to make a request. So I make a move, want to move to take the following ordinances from the table, back to table. That would be O R zero-two dash two-four, O R zero-three dash two, two-four, and O R zero-four.
Vice Mayor, if I may, we should do a motion for each one to have.
Right now, okay, so we'll start with O two.
Okay. So I'll make a, to request to remove from the table the ordinance, O R zero-two dash two-four at this time.
And we're gonna remove that. May I have a second to remove that ordinance?
Second.
From the table. Now, before we go, Kara, would you do me a favor? And please tell us the steps on why we're doing removing this from the table. So every, I want everybody's mind clear and the audience of people that are interested to understand what we're doing.
Madam Mayor, Council, during the March fourth council meeting, council was presented ordinance number O R zero-two dash twenty-four. After the public hearing and much deliberation, council voted to table the issue and requested additional information from staff and the developers. This motion taking the legislation from the table simply allows council to resume consideration of that main motion that was laid on the table.
So that motion has been made and seconded. So may I have, may I have a couple from all the council if they want to remove that from the table?
Vice Mayor Brown. Councilmember Gales. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Finley. Mayor Page.
Yes.
Could you read the caption for us, too, Kara, please?
An ordinance by the Trumpwood City Council accepting the recommendation from the Trumpwood Plan Commission to approve a final planned unit development, Project One, with conditions on approximately four point three-two-two acres of land, parcel numbers H three-three zero-zero-two-one-four zero-zero-one-four and H three-three zero-zero-two-one-four zero-zero-one-five partial, formerly known as parcel numbers H three-three zero-zero-two-one-four zero-zero-one and H three-three zero-zero-two-one-four zero-zero-two for the proposed cap name multifamily housing development with two three-story apartment buildings consisting of sixty-three apartment units with access from Main Street.
All right, now, the floor is open. If you have anyone that you want to comment or discuss. O R zero-two dash twenty-four.
Madam Mayor, Wanda Page is here. Would like to make a comment.
Good evening. My name is Wanda Page, just dated six oh one Chandler Drive, Trumpwood, Ohio, four five zero two six. I was told yesterday, and I didn't get any of these papers here, that some apartments was gonna be built in Trumpwood. So, and I'm understanding now that if they are built, they're gonna be built up here on Main Street. Is that correct, or am I wrong? So it's already been said and voted that this is going to happen. The apartments up there, it's already been voted by the councilman that this is gonna happen, or what?
Well, you're only, you're supposed to make a comment, and that's the reason I wanted to explain. On our previous meeting in, in March, these, this particular item, which we're talking about, which is O R zero-zero-two-two-four, we tabled it. At this council meeting, we untabled that motion so we could discuss it. And that's why we're here again. So it's gonna be discussed, discussed again. And we will take a vote on it this evening.
Oh, you haven't voted on it yet.
No, we tabled it. We tabled it in March. So that's why we're opening it up again, so everybody can, can, can come and, and tell us, you know, about, about how we feel about the, everything. This is an open and public meeting.
Okay, because it was my understanding that it was a done deal. But since you're gonna vote on it, then that's what I want to hear.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Sonu Jerry is here to speak on this ordinance as well.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, I want to pass my comments.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna pass on speaking.
Yes, all my comments, and I want to take all my passes, too.
Is there someone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, on the public hearing, we'll get through the people that register, and then I'm sure the mayor will ask if there's anyone that didn't have an opportunity to register. Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, Karen Moni is here to speak on this as well.
Hello again, everyone. Thank you for listening, Mayor and Council. My comments are the same as they were before. The difference is I'm leaving a lot of dirt behind me because we actually walked to the property this evening before the meeting just to get a visual, just like all of you want. We thought maybe that would help us with some of the clarity ourselves. It didn't help. We're probably as much more concerned now than we were before. The, the concerns are, and let me just restate them. Number one is the safety of the people in these hundred and ninety-four apartments and the liability that my husband and I would take on with that access to the creek. My next concern is the security of the property at sixty fifty-one Wolf Creek Pike, which is where I work. And my husband and I own that property. The other issue is the safety on Olive Road. I know I've said this before, but I'll say it again. I don't need an engineer to tell me. I don't need an engineer to tell me that they're going to eventually want to put in a turn lane. I asked for something in writing saying that they would not take our property to do that. I was told no, I would not get that in writing. But again, walking in today, I'm even more concerned about that. And the final point is, at every meeting, when I went to the planning commission meeting, I was told there would be some collaboration. When I came to the council meeting and spoke, I was told that you asked for collaboration. I was contacted, we were supposed to meet last week, that didn't happen. There was a connection today, about an hour before this meeting, maybe an hour and a half before this meeting. I have a trust issue with the collaboration. I don't feel like my concerns are being taken seriously, and I'm just asking you to help me with that. If there is promise, a promise that's made, I don't feel like it's trustworthy, because so far I've been shown that it's not. So I'm asking you to help me with that by making things very clear and very defined at the next steps. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Paul Mommy is here as well. It's not indicated on here if he would like to speak on all three ordinances or one specific.
Paul Mommy, 6051 Wolf Creek Pike. Pretty much the same, and my wife is very sure of you. I think the biggest concern that we have is, we did get a gentleman reached out to us, we had a meeting that got canceled, or didn't get canceled, there was a no-show in the meeting. And then earlier today, we got a voicemail saying that they would agree to up fence, which is what we're looking for, like, is sometimes a barrier. But again, there was really no collaboration. There's no contact before this meeting. So, you know, we really need to be taken seriously, just because of the return of somebody getting hurt in the creek, so that's really all I have to say. You could push the issue a little bit, we'd like something in writing from this group that Pete shared with us, that he's already talked to the other builders, and they've agreed to it, but we don't know what they've agreed to. That's all I have, thank you.
Madam Mayor, those are all the registered comments again. If there are others that will be wanting to sign up? I didn't know if there were some additional...
Sir?
Yeah?
Okay, you don't have to walk over, you can come up. I already made a compromise, if someone wanted to, they just wasn't able to sign in. We're all good here.
Well, I appreciate that, I just wanted, that's my whole thing, meeting order, ladies and gentlemen.
If I can just get you to state your name?
Yes, ma'am, my name's Robert McCann, I'm Chief Financial Officer and Principal with Over Companies. In collaboration with County Court Development, we are the developers of the Ad Main project. At the last meeting before council tabled the site plan approval, there's a couple of reasons why that was done. One is there were some folks that genuinely came up that said that was the first that they'd heard of the developments coming to town, which is always concerning. There was the issue with security, and then there's a question about traffic. And it was our expectation, or at least our desire, that we would be able to have a workshop session with the city council and maybe even a public forum where residents could come in and talk to the developers and see the plans and get a much better sense of what's going on. And of course, thirty days is not very long to coordinate the schedules of as many people that needed to be coordinated. So on behalf of our development team, and I know my fellow developers are willing to do the same, we're fine with waiving our forty-five day arrangement, the forty-five day requirement. For city councils to vote on this particular site plan, we would request that you re-table the plan to allow us to have more time to work with both the neighbors and city council to make sure that the number of items that were raised are able to be addressed. I agree with the gentleman that was up here before me, that I think it is important for there to be a meeting of the minds on the security issue prior to either the city council making the decision to approve or deny the site plan. While it's easy to say that we would put a fence up, the reality of it is, is there's some significant logistical issues to put a fence up. Both the topography of the site and the fact that the three developers don't own a hundred percent of the ground that's contiguous to the folks that just spoke's property. We anticipate that based on discussions with check downing of the CIC, that there would be an agreement to fence their portion of the property. But, you know, the devil is always in the details, and details unfortunately take a while to work out. So I would request, first make the offer to, under the high revise code, waive the forty-five day requirement, request that it be tabled, and then we'll have an opportunity to work out the issues and to resolve any informational needs of either the council or the citizens or the neighbors. So I request that of the council at this time.
Madam Mayor, ma'am, make some comments, please.
You're welcome.
First, I want to make sure that everybody understands what that forty-five day provision is, and under the Tropwood codified ordinances, once a final planned unit development plan has been approved by the planning commission and then submitted to council for consideration, council has forty-five days to make a decision. There are some case law out there that suggest that if council does not make that decision within forty-five days, then the application would automatically be approved. As council is aware, and I'm making this clear to the public, I've had conversations with the developer's attorney, and in fact, I received an email today from the council for the developers, who in writing has acknowledged what Mr. McCann just said, which is the developers are going to waive that forty-five day requirement to allow more thoughtful discussion and deliberation, should council choose to vote to approve or request this matter on the table. And if I could, Ms. Landis, I'd like to give that to you, so that you could add that to the minutes of the meeting, and I'll be able to answer any questions anybody might have.
Council on questions? Counsel, okay, five seconds.
My question is, even though the developer is waiving, how does that affect us seeing that it is written in our charter?
Because usually, when it comes to, in law, there are many requirements, but when the parties agree to waive the time, courts recognize that as a consensual agreement, and then the court will honor that agreement if the matter were to get to court. It's very, very competent, very routine.
Thank you.
So in effect, I guess what I would say is, in effect, what would happen is, if council were to vote to approve, leaving this matter on the table, that would be a statement by the body, the council, probably, they accept the request, they're in agreement to waive that forty-five day rule to move forward. That's effectively saying, developers say yes, and council says yes, that's the agreement that we're voting for, that's the meeting implies.
Any other questions, counsel?
Please, sir. So just for clarification, we have untabled it, so it's up to us whether we want to re-table it.
Correct.
So then my comment to Mr. McCain, just very, very concerned in regards to our longtime businesses, Mr. and Mrs. Mommy, who have been a fabric of Tropwood for years and invested in this community, I heard them saying they got a call, and they were told that a fence would be going down, but then I heard you say, maybe, it depends.
Yes, ma'am, I'm fine with committing to build a fence. You know, based on our prior conversations, and the CIC reached out to the Five Rivers Metro Park about barriers, and they suggested it not be a fence, but at the end of the day, this is Tropwood and it's city council's purview, not the Five Rivers Metro Park. And absolutely unequivocally, if the choice is to be turned down or to build a fence, we shall deliberate a fence. And I would expect that as part of the approval, that there is a requirement in the ordinance for us to put the fence in. Developers are not generally given a lot of faith in their word, and typically, city councils require written and contractual obligations for them to fulfill, so we will enter into a binding agreement to build a fence. So if I was unclear for that, I apologize. I'm just saying that it's not something that, you know, like you're going across a football field and say, we're going to put a fence from here, we're going to put a fence to there, and everybody nods their head and says, yeah, it's going to go from one end of the fifty to the other. The reality of it is, with the topography, we may have to do some work to figure out exactly where the fence is going to go, and to get it into, you know, my idea of a fence might not be what city council likes. You know, if I put a split rail fence up, for example, you'd probably laugh, that really wasn't the intention. Similarly, if I put up three rules of Tom Schatina wire, I'm sure the city council's also not going to be very happy with me. And part of my point was, is it's going to take a while for everybody to kind of get together and say, yeah, that's a fence that everybody can accept, and the city can accept, the neighbors can accept, and the developers can accept.
Just speaking on behalf of our businesses, because they have been with us for a long time, and they have committed to stay in Tropwood, could have gone anywhere. So I just want to make sure that there is some collaboration and some trust with everyone coming to the community, because we do come one. So I'm very concerned about that, but I do thank you for your comment. Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel Mommy is here.
Am I to understand that there was no collaboration prior to the date with, especially since you have the safety concern?
There was not as much collaboration as there should have been, yes, ma'am.
So you want more time to collaborate, to make sure that...
Absolutely.
...the safety issues are taken care of?
Yes, ma'am, and essentially, when we left the last city council meeting, I was under the impression that it was the goal of everybody to get together, to have an additional meeting, to go over the details, but with the city and the developers. And unfortunately, you know, it's hard to get everybody's schedule, you know, synced up, so we didn't get a meeting scheduled, but when we left the last city council meeting, and probably into the first or second week in March, we were hoping that we were going to have a full-out workshop and planning session prior to this meeting, because we didn't want to come into this meeting with city council having no additional information. And again, because the city has to approve what we do, even the developer and the property in there can't figure in a vacuum on what we're going to do.
Speaking with Mr. Sweeterman last week, he told me he was meeting with her last week, so I assumed that that was going to happen, because I went out of town.
I'm sorry, can you say the name?
It didn't, but I understand until today.
Say, I'm sorry, I didn't copy that, never.
I'm saying, I met with Mr. Sweeterman last week, and I was under the impression that he was going to meet with her last week, and now I think I understood that you did not meet with her until today.
You would have to ask Mr. Swiger that, because I wasn't privy to that conversation, but I am fine with meeting with the resident, while I think our perception of the risk is significantly different, I think, I understand where she's coming from. And the last thing I want to do is to have any children that are in our community get injured. And, you know, I'm a practical person, and what I'm getting from city council is, is that if we want to build our apartments, that we better address the issue. Accordingly, I am very prepared to address that issue.
Counsel Mommy. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. McCain, you are requesting that this council re-table the site, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
For what extended amount of time? What are you looking at as a timeframe, and what is the objective within that timeframe as far as all the meetings and collaboration? Do you have anything outlined?
I don't particularly have a formal outline, and I would expect that we would be able to get this done in forty-five to sixty days. The reality of it is, we need to get our developments underway, and so we do have a sense of urgency, and I think that there will be three different levels of meetings that will occur. One will be a workshop with the city council, which I think should be the last in the process, simply because you all are the approving authority, and if we have a meeting with you and you give us marching orders and we're not able to reach an agreement between the parties, then that makes it a little more difficult than us working with the city staff and the adjacent property owners to, you know, come up with a, what's the fence going to look like, and where is it actually going to be located? And also, as I mentioned, the CIC has a seat at the table because they own a fairly decent-sized portion of the front edge. And then last but not least, and I don't know how to crack this one, and we'll just have to figure it out, which is there's a high-pressure gas line that runs right down there. And as I sit here today, I can't tell you whether or not we can put a fence around that high-pressure gas line, and if we're allowed under the terms of the agreement, generally improvements of high-pressure gas lines are a no-go, but, so there's going to be, it's a fairly convoluted issue.
Well, Mr. McCain, since the council will be giving the marching orders, I kind of disagree with the order in which you would like to proceed. In fact, if we are open for more than one, if there are actually one as particular...
How do you do it?
They're very open, if there's any discussions that are actually going to take place just right now. So it seems like you put the, you know, cart before the horse, because again, we represent citizens, and we've heard what our citizens are saying, and we've also submitted our own, I guess, summary of all of those things that we would have liked to see addressed, being the collaboration piece and other pieces. So it just seems to me that you would start with the council if that were to happen, and then go from there and come back.
I'm fine with starting with the council. I don't know if I got to the third one, this is that I think, based on the, but this time and at the last meeting, there were residents that came forward that said that they were not aware of what was going on. And even when we have a formal workshop session with city council, it's a little intimidating for people to come up and necessarily ask the number of questions that they ask the question, there's a follow-up. So I think having a couple-hour meeting, open house, where the public can come in, see the plans, ask the question, you know, they may, they may talk to Pivotal after they talk to me and come up with another question, and come back over and talk to me about it, so it will be an opportunity to hear a lot of input from the public. And I didn't mean to be disrespectful by not indicating that I wanted to start with the council, I was trying to indicate this, as if like when we have those public meetings, there may be other issues that come up that no one's talked about yet, that we would like to get their opinion on, but it's more than what we would be trying to think.
No disrespect, though, I just wanted to...
Any other discussion from the council?
So it sounds like to me, Ms. McCain, you're asking for another forty-five days to add requirements or change the scope of the project? Why do you need the additional forty-five days?
Well, first of all, the city council is displeased with the lack of the ordinance Well, first of all, the city council is displeased with the lack of coordination with adjacent property, and understandably so. We'll have that coordination. And the, the other is, is that there's just, seems to be questions in the public about what these communities are all about. And we're talking about the corner of Main and Olive, where the city has built a fair amount of development momentum. And having the, the public have an opportunity to meet with the developers, to find out more about the communities, because there are a lot of negative stereotypes regarding workforce housing, that typically, when you're able to talk to folks in a more informal, longer-scope discussion, that, that they can get more comfortable with us, once they have an opportunity to talk to the developers. And to directly answer, one of you asked how long I wanted, and I'm sorry for that. I hope that it only takes forty-five days. And my bigger concern is, is that once we have these meetings, when do we get back on council, you know, on the agenda, because we need one day. So I would hope that between now and my other developers, my kickney for saying this, but that we should have all of those meetings and their interactions wrapped up by your first meeting in June. And so essentially, we would be tabled, not brought back at the next meeting, but then untabled at the June meeting.
So just to follow up, what if we want to progress towards six months?
Six months would be a significant issue for the development. And one of the things that these, all three of these communities are funded by the CDP PR funding that was provided to our community by HUD. And essentially, when HUD came out and made an allocation plan to the state of Ohio, or particularly with the Dayton area, for the disaster recovery, they did a survey on where worth a thousand-plus rental units that were lost in the community. And they indicated, and I, oh, my idea was not really heavily involved in that planning, but that eighty percent of them had come back to Troutwood, because you all have lost a nice amount of rental units.
But we've gotten recovered, about ninety percent of that to date. But my, my final question to you is, not so much financial, which I, I hear you saying it's kind of a rush because of the funding that's involved. We don't want to rush, we want to do this right for Troutwood, because this is a long time...
Why?
...been affected to our communities, and impacted to our community. So if it takes us one or if it takes us a year to do, number one, what it is that our businesses and our citizens want, we need, we just want to be afforded that opportunity. We don't want to be rushed.
Right, well, this is just like a heading, but we've gone through planning commission, and this, this entitlement process for these three communities has been going on quite for quite some time.
What do you mean entitlements?
Entitlements.
Entitlements, so that we could get the zoning, the PUD zoning in place, and to get the plans approved. You know, we had to rezone the property, so we were in planning commission, got the zoning approved, we went to the city council, got the zoning approved. We then had a preliminary or a final site plan approval, which went to city, or went to planning commission, and it was approved. And the final step of the process is for city council approval. And I appreciate that we don't want to rush it, but I think that this process has been going on for a while. And if there's too much of a delay, then the funding will be lost to our community. And that's my concern.
Council? Are there any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I may. The city staff would be more than willing to work with councils, the developers in the community, to conduct some focus groups, if you will. We'll get council scheduled, work with the developers, and see if we can set up some focus groups.
Yes.
And even have each of the developers in different rooms, and then bring them all together to discuss all of what council has and the citizens have to say as well. And that includes the business community as well. If that would be helpful and amenable for everyone.
I'm sorry.
We can't hear.
How are you going to let the citizens and the businesses know that we're going to have these meetings, focus groups?
Sure, staff would be happy to do that notification process. It's something we do on a regular basis. We could, again, coordinate with the developers, we could send out the press releases, we could do our public notification process, but also work with, we do have some emails and hyperreached, some people have signed up for that. We could utilize those tools as well.
All my good thoughts?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to make something clear. Is that if the question regarding the waiver of the forty-day and five-day requirement are valid questions, good questions? Right now, the status is that there is no end date on this. I think that the, the understanding of developers, as I've understood from my conversations with Mr. McNamee, and as I understand what I'm hearing from the council, is that there will not be a time certain that this will be done. Everybody would move forward, it's a process, and the developer's saying they need to have this process done within a certain period of time because of risk of the funding. Conversely, what I'm hearing council say is, if council moves, leave this on the table, and move forward as part of its outreach, and the things that council feels needs to do, that that process, you'll know when that process is done, and when things are ready to move forward and get this back on the agenda. So I think it allows for that nature of that dialogue and that discussion that I hear council asking for, and what I hear the developers asking for, and that's typically when the interns are discussing how things may be worked out, but ultimately, that's your decision. I'm simply saying that there doesn't need to be a time certain. In fact, sometimes leaving it a little open-ended allows for more flexibility without time constraints, to allow people to get done what they really need to get done.
Yes, that's real. A reaction to that, a whole other, all this would be that...
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Given a table option and all the collaboration, then would that mean, based on the marching orders and the collaboration and all of those other things, this ordinance could look completely different? It might not be exactly the same language?
The ordinance itself would like to be very, very close. It would be how the final plan is presented would look, because this is the final plan. It's still tailored around with the preliminary plan, plus it was approved by the planning commission. So yes, it would be, there would be some differences, but I think the key thing is, is that, as Mr. McCann alluded to, that document becomes the basis of what is the agreement that the developer will agree contractually to do. And that's really what's happening here, is there's effectively a negotiation of those contractual terms and other requirements. Mr. McCann, would you...
I would agree with that, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming up and everything. We do appreciate, again, for your time. Thank you so much. Council, you were given a package. You were asked to submit questions for this ordinance, and we've been working on this for the past two weeks. I'm asking you now, I'd like to put a motion on the floor, if we could vote on O R zero two dash twenty-four. Can I have a motion for that, please? So can you explain, there's a motion, I just asked for a motion, on O R zero two dash twenty-four, I'm sorry, what did I do?
What is the motion for?
The motion, I just said to vote on this ordinance, that the council would vote on the ordinance zero two twenty-four.
So then the motion would be put up? We don't need to do a motion to say we're going to vote? The question is before council, so now you would make a motion, whether that being to table, approve?
I'd say to vote.
That was on the agenda?
That's on the agenda. We're supposed to be voting on the ordinance zero two twenty-four. After we discussed, and we heard everybody, we were voting on each one. We removed the table.
Correct.
And we're going to do, we're going to do the table. We should have never, I'm just trying to be honest and transparent in front of everyone. But the table has been removed, and now remaining, I'm asking for an ordinance to vote on this, you know, from council. And I've got, what now, do I have someone that made a motion for it?
If I may defer to the moderator, we don't need to do a motion to say you can't vote. The motion would be what we want to do, so someone would make a motion to approve, and then the vote would be taken, with needing four votes and affirmative for the ordinance to be adopted.
Or someone can, with the perjury of counsel, someone can make a motion to leave the ordinance on the table, and that would happen before you vote, that now would be the time that motion would be made, that motion was failed for either lack of second or lack of a majority of votes, then you would move to the ordinance itself.
But isn't there a motion on the floor?
Sorry, a motion on the floor?
Nope, there's not a motion on the floor.
Okay, you see, okay, that's a good word, okay? I will make a motion, a motion to accept O R zero two four as presented on the agenda on table. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Finley?
No.
Councilmember Gales?
No.
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Vice Mayor Brown?
No.
Mayor Page?
Thank you. Karen, would you please read O R zero three dash twenty-four?
We will make a motion to untable zero three?
Yes. Madam Mayor, make a motion to move the tape from the table, ordinance number O thirty, excuse me, O R zero three dash twenty-four.
Some...
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page? An ordinance by the Troutwood City Council, accepting the recommendation from the Troutwood Planning Commission, to approve a final planned unit development, Project Two, with conditions on approximately two-point-six-eight-eight acres of land, parcel number H three-three-zero-zero-two-one-four-zero-zero-one-six, formally known as parcel number H three-three-zero-zero-two-one-four-zero-zero-zero-two partial, for the proposed Jalen Lofts multifamily housing development, with one four-story apartment building consisting of sixty-six apartment units. Madam Mayor, we do, Ms. Karen Loney would like to speak on this ordinance as well.
Thank you. I had signed up for all three, just in case. I just wanted to ask for clarity. There was, and I know Councilmember Gales asked about our meeting, so what had happened was, early March, Mr. Schweitzer had stopped by, and he had left his business card at our office, and asked if we could get together. So I emailed him, mainly so I had something in writing, I had some documentation, I emailed him and asked, you know, when we could get together. I also copied the owner of the business where our property is. He replied that he would be available on Wednesday of last week, two to four, and I said, "That works for me." So that was the plan. Wednesday came and went, there was no call, no email, no anything. Every day came and went, until just before this meeting today, I got a voicemail on my work phone, a voicemail on my cell phone, and I got a text message, kind of a sense of urgency. Literally, my husband and I were walking the property at that time, so I didn't, I did not get the message. I didn't text him, and I said, "We will be at the meeting, so we'll, we'll talk then." I did not think that was the time or the place to do something like that. That should have happened a long time ago. The collaboration, again, I, I don't understand why, from the planning commission meeting to, well, actually, let's go back to January sixteenth, which is when I first got my first letter. And respectfully, I know that you're talking about sending out emails and, and letters, I'm not getting mine. I did, I mean, we own the property since December of twenty-twenty-two, and one, we own two parcels, and one goes to the prior owner's son, and one sometimes gets to me. The meeting for tonight, we never got. So the son brought it to me on Friday, you know. So I don't know, I don't know how to fix that part, but I think that might be an issue that we have to address as well. So if it's a, if it's a blast, or if it's a website that we can go to, that would be great, anything to get the information. If I had known sooner, I would have, I certainly would have spoken out sooner, and I apologize for that, I just didn't know. But as soon as I did, within a half an hour, I sent an email to Ms. McDonald, Debbie McDonald, and addressed all of my concerns. I had spoken to Mr. Downing, and also expressed concerns, and each time was, again, kind of patted on the head, and I got false collaboration promises. Nothing has ever been collaborated with us. I, I, I'm not opposed to progress, I can't say this enough, I'm all about Troutwood being built up, I just want the right progress. I know we all do.
But Amy Woodhouse is here. Yes ma'am. Keith Schweitzer is here to speak as well.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for your time. First and foremost, thank you, Councilwoman Gales, coming out and seeing Troutwood senior. You know, I, I hopefully you all got our correspondence, we wanted you to come out and see the quality of the project. And we have been working hard over the last month to make sure we were addressing those comments and questions that were brought up by our residents. And we had a very productive neighborhood meeting, resident meeting, we probably had twenty-five of fifty units show up and participate in the meeting. I think they were all excited with the progress. We committed to specific office hours, which had already been in place, Monday through Thursday. We have our community manager on site. And then Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we have our service tech on site. And then on Tuesday and Thursday, our regional maintenance manager is on site. So already has been very excited, we've got every work order up to date, a few points on the zoning that were addressed. I think the, the major issue, my concern, the biggest concern was, is we were having trouble keeping the push button in our system working. And there was temporary short outages, but unfortunately, very tough outages for those who need those buttons. But the work we worked has been, the company put all of that in, has come back, fixed all that, it's all operational, and I've been back three times since then, and not only it wasn't working, but residents were certainly excited to have those working. Elevators have gone out or been needed to be serviced two times, they were both times serviced day off. So I was actually pleasantly surprised to hear our elevator companies are responsive. At that point in time, they were taking out the trash on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We've added one more day, just to make sure. And the three or four times that I was there, the garbage was about halfway up, so it wasn't overflowing, we didn't have any of those issues. But adding that extra day will make sure that doesn't occur. We also went from mopping the floors one day a week to two days a week. Also, as residents, they better, you know, help us take care of the property as well, and these are, these are things that they can help address, too. So we're very excited to make some headway there. I think residents were very happy. We've actually addressed a few other issues. We did not have a grill, that's just an oversight, so we are putting in a grill, we're adding a concrete pad, and we're on the shelter, the shelter needs used daily. The shelter needs to be used daily, whether it's winter or summer. During the winter, smokers. During the summer, certainly, it's here used by bedding. So having a grow out there, allowing for outdoor functions is great. One of the things that the residents are going to do on our meetings is create a residents association. And they'll be working with our partners to create onsite activities, whether it be foot club, scrapping clubs, to find out actually a park, park club. And so they're going to be doing that. We're going to have a meeting next month to help them establish that. And then from there, they're going to manage it themselves as a residents association. It also gives them a voice directly to kind of outreach with our managers. Every resident brings their issues, but it also brings them a way to advocate as they want new things. The next thing, after we got the grill out, the next thing was a community guard. So we're going to be working with them to try and apply for grant funding and help make those new things. Ultimately, I think everyone's happy. If there are any residents here, certainly happy to address the question. I'm just excited to see that and appreciate Councilwoman Gales' time coming out and seeing the property. I hope she saw it as a quality property. The units are nice, the building is nice. Residents, you know, are generally very happy to have this in the community. That's why we wanted to serve more. We have a very big waitlist, as many as seventy-five people at one point on our waitlist for senior housing. And while this is the workforce development, it's open to all. When we say workforce, it's open to all. So we would anticipate serving that senior house, that senior set aside or waitlist within this facility as well. It is going to be non-restricted. We'll serve families and we'll serve seniors and any and all people who have a need for a high-quality home. And to Karen, and I apologize for Wednesday. And Councilwoman Gales, I'm happy to see you and helping. I left that building and within a quarter of a mile, struck myself fully sick. Ended up in the Lee's parking lot, doing things that I knew Karen would not be coming after to visit her. So I've been out of commission for four days. Promise you, thirty hours off of course, so everything's good now. I'm glad to be here, but I wanted to let you know, and today I can see Councilwoman Gales, I'm going to see her next, and I can't wait to have a conversation with her because we wanted to commit to some of the things that she's doing. But I haven't felt that bad in a long, long, long time. So I apologize. It's not in my character to, you know, I was leaving the meeting with you expecting to go over there. So it was really tough for me to not show up. But I was out for a day, so that, so I did not get a chance to give her a pullback and apologize and all that. But what we did tell her, when I heard her, is we've been here listening the whole time. And in many correspondences to the city staff, I kind of said, we agree that if that's the solution we have reached, we'll make it a condition of our development that we'll participate in this next project. It's not optimal from the standpoint of still got the scares, like getting across the gas line, but we'll commit to it. There's always a way, where there's will, there's way. We don't have an issue with that. I think the only reason staff hesitated to say, yeah, we should do this is that the metro parks would say otherwise. But for what it's worth, we're committed to that. Whatever and however we can do it, we want to do that. We make that work, we accept that as a condition of approval. There were some questions about security. We tried to address all of this. And just so you're aware, we communicated to staff within days of the meeting last time, saying, we hope we can have a workshop the last week of March. And said, here's a three or four days, and we think we can handle this. We said the last week of March, we wanted to give as much time for people to prepare, but also hit that down beforehand. And there was, you know, at least brought back to me that that's not enough time for a name council and put up the what. So that's why we're, we were asking for the tabling is, I went to staff and said, yes, let's have this meeting, I want to have this meeting. We have no problem with this meeting. And the answer was, well, we don't have enough time. So now we're asking for that more time, and that's what Bob was trying to do. I've got multiple emails where I requested that. And I do want to point out too, Bob is right in that we were here in two thousand twenty-three asking for this zoning with the city kind of in full partnership with us. And you own this land in some way, shape, or form through the C I C. We've worked with the city to identify the site that we thought was the right site. We brought it into the city. We went through the two public processes, planning commission, council. The zoning is approved. Now, okay, now we have what we need. What you're seeing on your paper is what was approved in two thousand thirty. And we had three-plus public meetings. There were dialogues and visits and attendance, where those meetings approved the zoning of this property well back then. We were excited because we knew then that that gave us the opportunity to go get this money from the state. And I understand that the tornadoes were four years ago. We've been begging the state to get this money out for four years, and finally it's here. I walked past those pictures on that hallway. And you had to see here arena damage like that. It's much more sad to see a home gone, see that family in this place than see Trotwood and government county advocated with the state to say, if we need this money, we took out the damage. And they listened. And they said, you're right, we're going to focus all of these funds, or eighty percent of these funds, which actually have been up to your zip code. And then we said, okay, let's go work with the city and find out where the best site is. We investigated and balanced sites, and there was a lot of denial with staff, with administration. We're excited, supportive, hand in hand, thinking we were partners. In fact, in this development, it's ours, the C I C is the partner, or co-owner, co-owner. We said, we want to take it a step further. We want to make the C I C a owner in this so that they can receive some economic benefit and further their economic ability to impact this community. So I just wanted to be clear that we did go through a lot of effort to the point now, now we're zoned in twenty-three, what's the next step? Do a site plan. Okay, what we do, we do a site plan that is exactly the same as the concept plan that was approved in the year before. And we bring that site plan and say, oh, this is great, look, it works out. We just squeeze a little building by the shift at five feet. We had a few extra parking spaces to make sure we got parking covered. So we're really bringing forward the exact same plan that was approved a year ago from the zoning perspective, when we're trying to do the site plan. And we go to planning commission in March, and they said, yeah, this is consistent. We recommend it for approval. And in fact, at that meeting, they said, please consider I do some outreach because people were talking the same way they're talking now. And we all agreed. And in fact, after that planning commission meeting in early March, we worked with staff and had a non-required work session, I think it was March twenty-sixth. We noticed, everyone, as big a crowd as this participated in that work session. I'm sorry to hear that some people might not have gotten that, but we all showed up. We represented, dialogue occurred, and we thought, well, at least we got some of this out. And they answered that, I'll make sure. We didn't need outreach, participated in it. So the end result of, and we get the council, and it's like, you didn't do outreach. Well, actually, we did just do an extra special meeting. And so we realized, but we'll do another, we're happy to. So we stayed there for that meeting. We asked staff, let's do this meeting late March, get it done. Couldn't get it done in time. So we are asking for that additional time. If you're unable to give me that additional time, if you're unable to give me that additional time to go have a work session, which we will work with staff, we'll get it scheduled, whether it's a holiday or not, we'll get it scheduled for later this month. We'll set up two days, I'll be here three days, if it helps us get comfortable with this development. If you're going to take action tonight, I request you a requirement for approval and a request to get added in these conditions. Because these are what I have heard from residents as well as council. I would request you add a condition that the developers would participate in a cooperative effort, because that's along the three. In some ways, I thought to say, let's put that in a fund that the C I C can, the city can choose, what's the best fence. But we accept that as a condition. There was conversations about why not a dog park. We'll accept the condition that we had a dog park.
And those are all the threats and questions that we said. And I really appreciate it. We hear you now in here. I do, I do appreciate it.
I do, I do, yes, thank you. I just, four years of hard work and effort for each of these developers, because we were already approved, we already have zoned it, we then spent seven figures to get to this point. So now we're sitting there, a site plan approval, just trying to hit what we're approved for. And it's very scary for us to think now, we spent seven hundred thousand based on approval they gave us last year, and now we're bringing it back for the next step. And it can all go through.
We hear you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember? I think we have our citizens.
Okay, do you have any more citizens that want? All right.
Good evening, Council. My name is Aaron Longley. I live at seven twenty-one College Avenue in Trotwood. I am on Trotwood Medical Board of Education, and I serve on the C I C board for Trotwood's Board of Education. So the one thing that I would like you, like you to consider when you go and vote for projects like what they are presenting is just remember the scorecard numbers for Trotwood Madison City Schools. And how many students that we have that are economically disadvantaged? That number right now is eighty-seven percent. Denise, you know that very well, because you're on the Trotwood Madison School Board. So if you guys consider the projects going forward, what we would like to do, myself, Sonya Cherry, and Dion Simmons are here today, what we would like you guys to know, what we stand on, is just make sure that you're thoughtful and mindful about what comes with the projects that are being presented. And as we do, if the community hadn't heard about it, the developer didn't try to come to the community, they just requested the city to school board last week. Whereas the people that don't have any idea of what's going on in the neighborhoods, I live in a neighborhood that's a chance to where this is going on. I received a notice, and Ms. Gales, I heard you the last meeting, you are Councilwoman, say that you couldn't believe that people weren't educated, weren't educated about it. You know, I had that same disbelief, that we weren't given the proper notice about something like that coming to our neighborhood. But as a person who represents our school district, represents the community on how we educate our kids, Trotwood made changes in November. And that's the reason why the pushback is happening now. It's not happening because nobody, people aren't informed. It's just that we changed our leadership. And we have to really take comprehensive looks at how our developments are going to be in the city. And, you know, me serving on Trotwood's school board, we want to make sure that our students are put in the best situation we can, but we also want to put our teachers and our staff in situations where they can educate. So remember the number as well. Eighty-eight, eighty, I'm sorry, eighty-six percent of the students that live in our district are economically disadvantaged. And are these, are these developments that you're talking about bringing to the forefront, ones that are going to help us change the tide for those families that already have lived in these situations? I heard the last gentleman talk about what the tornado destroyed. And I'd like to commend the council on bringing back Westwood, my partners. I'd like to commend the council on the fact that Woodland Hills is going to come back online. So some of those same houses that were destroyed coming back online. Not to mention that Trotwood itself has more adoption-ready program than any community in West, in West Dayton. So we have to be conscious about the developments that we're going to have coming to our community. And I've just come before you today as a partner to thank you guys for taking that comprehensive look with their proposal to bring it up to you. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. My name is Trent Nohr, and I'm a native Trotwoodian, current resident, business owner in the community, and I have a kid to be with and stuff. I kind of hit all of the points here. I came to express some concerns that I had. I tried to do the best job that I can of listening rather than just coming with, you know, pop shots. So I appreciate all of your insightful questions. I appreciate the developers and what they had to say. I disagree with some of it, so I'll start there. I think that, I guess maybe, I guess the board and the developers can do a better job of educating, they said that this is a long process, a long conversation. Well, being a part of the community, I don't feel like I've been involved in that conversation at all. I get, you know, a lot of last-minute notices, I was late to the meeting tonight because I had a business, but I thought it was very important for me to be here. You know, so I think that we could all come together to make part of that very long process to get a development such as this approved, be communicating with the community. A lot of the things that were proposed tonight, like workshops and education process, that's a thing that should have been done four years ago prior to making all these arrangements with the previous president. So I think that we could all be better served as a community to take the time to educate the community, whatever efforts that takes. That should be part of the budget that we're working with if we're going to propose bringing back housing. I've been educated on a lot of things tonight that I wouldn't know. As far as, I think I heard someone say that over ninety percent of the housing that was lost already have been brought back online. Also, I heard the developers, the developers say that some of the HUD funding was at jeopardy and being lost. Both of those things being said tonight, I'd see like a huge opportunity for Trotwood to build back better. We've already brought back online a lot of the housing that was subsidized or income-based. Yet we have HUD funding. We can build back the last bit of that in a fashion that will bolster our community and be something that we can be proud of as a community versus some of the, some of the negative stigma that comes along with some of the traditional developments that eventually become referred to as projects. You know, I have a bit of education about like the covenant for the required to live there as far as eighty percent. I have a concern about that in that although it is roughly higher than the income median income in Trotwood, what happens if we can't fill those spaces? Does the covenant then become adjusted, and then we start to move in? People have a lower income level or start to subsidize some of the housing projects that are being torn down and are sticking with the West Dayton, and then we just bring that same thing to Trotwood and concentrate, and concentrate there. Again, I think that creates a great opportunity for us to do maybe scatter sites. There are so many different opportunities out there that we could develop something to bring back those last doors in a manner that would encourage prosperity. So I think that if we're going back to the drawing board, which is what I'm hoping, and I think that I'm seeing that there could be an opportunity when we do that to invite developers in, but also make it very clear that we need to collaborate from the very beginning so that the development that comes out of it reflects something that the citizens of Trotwood want to see. Lastly, I also noticed that there was a pretty decent tax abatement attached to this. Typically, with those types of abatements, there become requirements for participation. I know what my community looks like. I would love to see the development in my community have some of that reflected in the workforce and the developers, and from top to bottom, quite frankly. I think that things that the prosperity that comes to our community shall also reflect everything. So again, if we're going back to the drawing board, I think this is a great opportunity to educate our citizens, educate our business owners, and come together and create something that along with long time seasoned developers, that we could create in our community that everybody will be happy with. So I'll leave that there.
Online, please. So right now, there are any other comments here?
No, there are none.
No comments. And this is on the Jalen Lofts. Council, I need, I need a problem. Well, we had the same thing. We can either table this, or we can either vote on this, on O R zero three twenty-four. Do I have a motion for either four on the floor?
I would have any other questions before you do that?
Oh, yes. You're saying? Let me, let me go back and cut this, like you're re-planting. Because, well, I'm let, I'm let Chris, but the previous ordinance that we know, we could, we could either table the ordinance as they pass this for this unit because we have to treat each, the way the ordinance and everything is written, we have to vote on each individual ordinance. That's the way it's designed. We can't do it by the sound, each one is voted on individually. And the previous ordinance, well, I'm keep, keeping up with everything, is that you can either table this, they wanted it tabled so you have more time to discuss it. And the previous ordinance, well, I'm keeping up with everything, is that you can either table this, they wanted it tabled so you have more time to discuss it. Either or, or we can vote on this as a council. That's the two, am I not correct, Chris? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that's a fair way to put it.
That's a fair way, right?
In addition, because somewhat unusual, while there's three separate projects, they mean they're all somewhat applying.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say.
That's the reason why they've been separated because there's three separate projects that really make up one, and they have, but they have to be treated differently because there's three developers, developers play part of the whole.
And then I did say on the last ordinance that before we voted and the motions placed, all this information was given to every councilman. The questions were answered, they were given out. So now I'm asking someone for a motion on the floor, please.
I have a motion that we vote on zero three, four three zero four two four, as stated on the agenda.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
Councilmember Finley?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Gales? Councilmember Clark?
No.
Vice Mayor Brown?
No.
Mayor Page?
No. Karen, would you please read?
Mayor, if we get a motion to take OR oh four five four from the table?
Now we are, I'm going to take from the table ordinance number oh three zero color dash two four.
Second? I'll second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Now the ordinance, now the ordinance is live, so would you please read the ordinance? And if we have anybody that can read it that they need to talk on this, please, I would like to know.
An ordinance by the Trotwood City Council accepting the recommendation from the Trotwood Planning Commission to approve a final planned unit development, project three, with conditions on approximately four point two five eight acres of land, parcel number H three three zero zero two one four zero zero one seven, for the proposed flats on Wolf Creek multifamily housing development with one four-story apartment building consisting of sixty-five apartment units.
Is there anyone that needs comments?
Madam Mayor, Karen Longley also registered to speak on this ordinance. We have Mr. West down here to speak on this ordinance.
Mr. You. Hello, again.
Good morning, Mayor Bill. Executive Vice President. It's twenty-one sixty East Fifth Street, Dayton, Ohio. With the development partners, if you will, I've spoken a lot about collaboration, about investment, about the timeframe, about the opportunity. So I'm not going to repeat all that. What I would, I do like the, the one gentleman who's a school board member, that housing is considered to be a real basis for well-being of families, seniors, kids, and so forth. So I, you know, I can't go back on the others, I guess, but I would just respectfully ask you to table our proposal, our ordinance, and we need to, I think we, you know, there's a tremendous opportunity here to come together, figure it out, and go forward and drive quality affordable housing for Trotwood. So I just very simply request that you table our ordinance and that we shall be able to meet again and figure it out. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have no other registered comments.
We've seen none. Come in some questions right now? Just don't let me add some of the non-questions. So right now for this, for OR zero four dash twenty-four, I need a motion either to table or either to accept it as is on the agenda, to vote on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we table. Table the motion, OR four twenty-four.
Do I have a second? Motion fails. May I have a motion to approve OR zero four two four as stated on the agenda? Do I have a second? I'll second.
Councilmember Finley?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Vice Mayor Brown?
No.
Mayor Page?
No. May I have a motion to close the public hearings? Some.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Resolutions? I'm sorry, Karen.
Our twenty-four dash thirty-seven, a resolution by the Trotwood City Council authorizing the Trotwood Community Improvement Corporation to enter into loan agreements with Civista Bank to finance the redevelopment slash construction of up to ten single-family homes, with each loan agreement not to exceed a total amount greater than seventy-five percent of the loan-to-value ratio per property.
I'm sorry, that city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have with me the executive director of the Trotwood Community Improvement Corporation, Mr. Chad Downing and Derek Williams to assist him. We are excited about this relationship with Civista Bank, where we will be able to enter into a loan agreement if council approves so that we can develop a single-family housing.
Council, good evening. Great to see you this evening. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. I'd like to introduce Derek Williams. For those of you who don't know, he's the newest addition to the Trotwood CIC team. He joined with us in the beginning of last September. He's a project manager, and this is some initiative that he spearheaded. This is going to be a really impactful project for our work to rebuild home for single-family ownership in the community.
Good evening, council. I'm very excited to be here. I joined the team last year and have really enjoyed working in the city of Trotwood to further some really good initiatives around housing. To give you some background, I worked as a mortgage loan officer for seven years before I joined the CIC. My background is in creative financing for single-family homes. Last year, we were approached by Civista Bank, which is a medium-sized bank in Sandusky, Ohio. They were looking to, in part of their plans to expand to new locations, they must meet federal accreditation for CRA, and that is the Community Reinvestment Act. The Community Reinvestment Act is designed in order to give fair lending practices to different MSAs throughout states. Most medium-sized banks in Ohio have a CRA lack of accreditation here in the Dayton MSA area. So it gives us a real opportunity to reach out to these banks and get creative financing to fulfill the CRA accreditation. So I started a discussion with Civista, the vice president of commercial lending, about getting some financing through the CIC in order to complete some single-family homes that we have left over from the 2008 recession in the town of the neighborhood in order to get these properties back online and under homeownership for new residents. It's a mutually beneficial relationship. They're doing the loan at cost. We can do up to ten properties with this loan. The end goal is to develop a relationship over the next couple of years with Civista to point them to putting a retail location here in Trotwood and expand the financial options for folks. If you guys have any questions about the loan terms, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I just have a comment. First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you. Is it possible, Civista is pregnant, never heard of before, and several of our council members here are also new to CRA, I know it's community investment, and several of our council leaders do not, and what that entails. I would like us to table the resolution and have a workshop, and have you bring the bankers before us. And also, I know I have additional questions, so that would be my request of you.
The team that is bringing this loan is out of Sandusky, Ohio, so I'm doing it directly with.
We could do a team's meeting, I mean, virtual, it could be a telecom, just so that our council members will have an opportunity to meet with the folks and gain more information. Because for me, a million dollars, that's a lot of citizens' money to say yes to without having a lot more answers.
So we would be only doing two to three properties at a time, so there would never be a million dollars out the door in lending at a time. So this would be an incremental process through the next two years.
Okay, so the way it's written, it's up to a million dollars.
So the way that it's written in legislation is through ten units. We wanted to change the way that the ordinance is written to specify that these are individual loans per unit for LTB of seventy-five percent per unit. So we would only be doing up to two, three units at a time, so we wouldn't have a million dollars in lending out the door. We would have up to seventy-five percent per unit, so the first unit would be sixty-five thousand right now. So it wouldn't be a million dollars. It would be, over the next two years, we may be entering into agreements that are up to a million dollars over the span of two years, but we'll never have a million dollars in loans on our books.
And also, just having a list of the properties, I think, is good for council to understand the appraised values. It just seems like a lot more questions. For me, in order for me to be a good servant of our citizens' dollars, I have a lot of questions before I would be able to.
And, council, one thing I just wanted to clarify is that this loan is coming to the CIC from Civista Bank. These are not tax dollars. So in effect, what we're doing is leveraging private dollars to reinvest into the homes in our community. So the longer that we wait, the longer these homes sit vacant and keep property values down in the neighborhood. We already have these ten homes, and we've owned them for quite some time, and our objective here is to get these properties under rehab. We've already rehabbed two on Azalea, in fourteen ninety, fifteen twenty-five Azalea. Our goal is to follow those properties up now that we have the comps to keep momentum that the neighbors really want to see. So we're not spending tax dollars here. We're actually leveraging the resources that the CIC has to do this work into the neighborhood.
So why are you asking the citizens of Trotwood to sign on on the loan?
That's a great question. In our ordinance that establishes the CIC as the city's economic development agency and actually specifies what members sit on our board, it is one of the key factors that we have to come to council for any financial approvals that we need for lending. We've done this historically with a day or credit union loan that we did for one strater for the rehab of that two-unit here. So that was about a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar loan that we're using to rehab that to become a pharmacy in a doctor's office. Similarly, several years ago, we had a loan from County Court to be able to acquire these properties and do the initial rehab before we sold them under qualified developers. What we're trying to do now is to make sure with the limited properties we have lending, that we finish the neighborhood out strong. So that's the only reason we come to council for approval initially. We still want you to know what we're doing as your economic development agency, but this is nothing to do with tax dollars. If anything, we're leveraging the tax dollars to do more work. And most importantly, right now, these properties sit in our ownership. We don't have the resources to do effective rehabs until we get these dollars right now because we've got a lot of different projects at play. But they also are not tax-producing right now because we are a tax exempt until they're sold to a private user, and the objective of these is for homeownership. More importantly, right now, we are in the phase where there are a lot of homeownership down payment programs. If we miss that window, we're going to miss the opportunity to help make sure that good deals are done for our homeowners that are sustainable going forward. So while we appreciate and understand the questions that you have, and we certainly are happy to bring Civista in here, we don't want to delay this too much further because we're hitting the construction season now. This is something the CIC board has already approved for us, and now we're just checking the boxes required in our ordinance for how we're established for our relationship with the city.
And thank you for that, and I am aware of the different loans that you've gotten. We work together on. We'd like to understand, have those been paid off? The loans that's already been received? And of those properties that's been rehabbed, have they been, have they been sold? Or do you still have them? And then as far as the return on investment, what that looks like? So for me, there's just a lot of questions that I would still like to have clarified. When we talk about educating the community and educating, of course, some of the council members, I think it's very important that we let our citizens know how we're spending their dollars. I've done it in the past, I know, but I get questions all the time, and it's very, very hard for me to answer the questions when I don't understand myself.
Absolutely, and we're always happy to go to do workshops. As council knows, at the invitation, we're always here to provide that. And I think we can still accomplish both, still moving forward with this financing and bringing everyone together and giving that whole overview, if that would be okay with you, councilwoman. But to answer some of your questions very quickly, the county corporate loan has been paid off for several years. That was more of a financial mechanism to get properties through the tax foreclosure process and back to productive use. Through that, we have done over a hundred and twenty-five single-family properties across the community. The majority of them go into homeownership and have been a part of our value increase throughout the community. We can provide a more detailed report on this, and we've touched on this in past year's annual reports. The last few properties that we have left now, we've been holding to get financing to help make sure that the properties are done right. But we're talking about our full rehabilitations, even reworking the studs in many of these houses so that we can make sure we've got energy efficiency, remaining the R values that we want to see for insulation and making sure our residents have good quality, lower utility payments when it comes to buying these homes. These are effectively brand-new loans, is what we're talking about here. For the day-year loan, for the one-strater property, the commercial property we're developing, that's still in process. We're hopeful that that will be done here in early summer, midsummer, after we get through some of the tenant design phase, which is what we're in right now. We're very excited. We've already done the tenant for that property. So for these, we're really in motion. We've got contractors lined up. We're going to be doing a request for qualification to get more local contractors from Trotwood positioned to work on these properties. And we do run the risk of with these financial partners, who they've been waiting for us to get to work on these for forty-five days now. So we want to be mindful of the relationships that we're establishing, and one of the goals of the CIC is to be able to work at the speed of business. That was one of the initial setups of this organization. And that doesn't set aside, we want to report to council and provide information, but I just want to caution that if we take too much time, we may miss out on the opportunity to work with partners who want to get things done in a quick fashion. So I just want to share all that for your work.
I understand. I certainly would like to have a workshop, not only for my benefit, but for any council members as well as the citizens of Trotwood.
Absolutely, we'd be more than happy to do that. On this, any topic that you'd like, council.
So I need a motion on the floor. I need, I'm sorry, any other questions, council? I want to make sure that, so may I have a motion on the floor?
I motion that we table the resolution twenty-four thirty-seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Will we vote to the table?
Yes, we will. No. Councilmember Clark?
I'm ready, thank you.
Vice Mayor Brown?
No.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. We'll be back for a workshop for this. Thank you.
Karen, could you read our twenty-four dash thirty-seven?
A resolution by the Trotwood City Council authorizing the city manager to accept Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funds through the Surface Transportation Program administered by the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the purpose of resurfacing challenge from road from dynamo road to Oak Road.
The city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have Johnny Lepuski, our Public Works Operations Manager, here just to talk briefly about this project where we receive federal funding.
about this project, um, where we receive federal funding.
Good evening, Counsel. How are you guys? Um, the lady has been stated, this is a MBRPC grant. It's a eighty-twenty grant. It'll be two mil and resurface approximately two miles of Shiloh Springs. Um, it'll stretch from Oaks to Diamond Mill. Um, that, like I said, we got twenty percent, they'll pay eighty. The total cost of the project is six hundred and seventy-four thousand, six thirty-six. Our portion would be one eighty-six sixty, theirs will be four ninety-three nine seventy, and we will put a ten percent contingency, which the project total will be seven forty-two oh nine nine. Um, we went after this grant for several years, that's how we've actually paved Shiloh from Wolf. This will be the last section, and Shiloh will be totally done. Um, I'm very sure we'll go after this grant again, which we do every year to do, uh, paving, so that's why we're asking to get this approved and move forward.
Any questions, Counsel? May I have a motion?
So, Assistant...
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
We have no comments. Hearing the comments, Phil.
Madam Mayor, there are no comments, I have no announcements.
And no announcements?
Yes.
Councilmembers, I'm just going to hold it, we've been here a lot. If you have something to say, uh, please chime in. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Um, switch it up a little bit. I'm not going to, because if you don't have anything to say, it's fine, and if you do want to say something, please do, in my, Counsel.
I just want to thank all the citizens for coming out and, and, um, having, and I, I would like to see this, every time we have a meeting, um, also want to say, stay safe tomorrow. Um, those of us who are tornado survivors, you know, there's, there's warnings out tonight. Not warnings, there are notices out, that's what I wish for, so please stay safe.
And let it come in?
To make a happy tone. Um, this past weekend and weekend prior, I had the opportunity to attend the photo in the Military Ball in the dead time, and we had a number of students from Trotwood that were included, and it was just truly a honor and a privilege to watch our students, um, do the different meticulous routines and to be very, um, patient, um, very kind, very studious. Um, the women were very classy. It was just something to, to, to say you're proud to be, um, a member of the Trotwood community, and our students, um, are working hard to elevate, um, to be successful. So I just want to say congratulations to everyone that was in attendance, um, everyone that was selected, the winners, everything. Everyone was a winner. Um, there was no one that was better than the other, but it was just great to see excellence and to see that coming from the city of Trotwood.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments from the council?
If I don't mind you. Okay. Just, they're getting it really hard. Yeah. Um, the one thing, the citizens for coming out tonight, that means a lot. Um, we represent you, but we are all here, representative of our city, so we appreciate your comments, and we've heard what you had to say. Um, I know, and I'm always speaking for myself and just, I am not against progress at all. I just think that we have to work better on the communication piece, what that means and what that looks like on, for all parties, so...
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. I'm too excited. And the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just would like to, um, make a couple of announcements. One is the solar eclipse is next week, I think it is, um, on April the eighth. For those of you who do not have their solar eclipse glasses, you can see Mr. Charles Wheeler back there. Uh, we do have some for Trotwood residents, mild supplies blast. It is important that you do protect your eyes on that day. I do want to also give, uh, better clarification for people on communications. Um, we did go through a charter review process just a couple of years ago, and our Charter Review Committee outlined the posting requirements. All residents do not get all notifications, that is not a part of the process. However, on our website, that information is always present for those public hearings. So I really would like to take a moment to invite people to do two things. One is go to Trotwood.org. Number two is sign up for our Hyper Reach program. That is another program we have for communication. So I want people to understand and set realistic expectations for people as well as to where they can collect information. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I thank everyone for coming out, those that were here in person and those that were virtually with us, and, uh, it's always important to hear, uh, the citizens and your concerns because, uh, for me to not, you put all of us that sit up here on the dais up here to represent you, and that's what we're going to continue to do. Um, I, I also want to thank the staff. I know you all worked all day long today, and you're here this evening, and for the past two, uh, past, past three months, we've been here over three hours, but due diligence is, is worth the outcome to make sure everybody's heard and that we do the right things for the citizens of Trotwood. So I want to thank you again. I hope everybody enjoyed their past weekend, and I want everybody to be safe tomorrow during the storm, and also very safe on, on the eighth, on, on Monday, with, with the solar eclipse. And all my, so there, uh, the meeting is now adjourned.